After two, we're starting a meeting five minutes late due to the change in location. We've got everybody here. We've got a situation obvious that everybody knows about, we're gonna change the agenda for a little bit today. We're not gonna have the kids here from the middle school or the high school advisory council, nor will the robotics team be presenting information. So, other than that, I don't believe there's any other changes to the agenda.
No, I believe that students won't be here and I'll explain a little bit more about that.
Okay. And I'm gonna turn this over to Bob right now, just to, so Bob can give everybody an update of where we're at today.
I do apologize to everybody that thought the meeting would be at the high school. This is really an emergency situation in which we needed to change location. I did check with MSBA and they said as long as I post on the doors and it's an emergency situation that we are fine to go. This is a unique thing. I promise you, we would not have moved under any other circumstances than what we have right now. To tell you the truth, I'd be very happy to be at high school right now because that would mean that things are going much better than the way it's going right now. On yesterday, really, that's when this particular situation developed. During the choir concert last night, we had two gentlemen faint. And we thought it was just heat, they were under lights, they were packed in close together. It was a long concert. We moved them out, the robes were very wet, and we thought it was just the fact that it was hot. But as the concert continued to go on, and we cooled them down, they started to feel better, but as the concert continued to go on, kids continued to get sick. They didn't faint, but we moved them out. We could tell they weren't feeling well, we moved them out into the area to the point where eventually we called 911. And we brought the fire department and paramedics over because we didn't know what was going on. At that point, we evacuated the auditorium and we checked for carbon monoxide, of which we found nothing. It came up zero. And that even stumped us more because that was the only thing that we could think of that might do what was happening. At that point, we continued to go through the building and we did check every, all the building, and it continued to be zero. We did send our headless sorting up to the roof with the fire department, and we did notice that coming out of our stacks, the air was so heavy that it was dropping right onto the roof of the building and then flowing with the wind. And what we believe was happening was that we also have the air intake for the auditorium up there at the same place, so it was, air was dropping off of our stacks, hitting the roof, floating along, and then got sucked into our air intake. And what I believe happened is that our air intake took some of it in, detected some polycarbon monoxide, and that, of course, told our system to bring in more fresh air, of which on our computer system, we saw a spike. It showed a little bit of influx of carbon dioxide in the system, and then it hit a spike, and then it dropped and it was gone. That's the only thing that we know that happened that night, and that's the only thing that we can assume that caused the students to get sick. We did have seven students taken to the hospital that night. All we believe are doing fine right now, one was transported to Minneapolis and is doing fine right at this particular point. But because we thought we figured out what would happen, or what had happened, what had brought air into, or at least fumes into the auditorium, at the end, then we again rechecked the whole building, and again it showed zero carbon monoxide. This morning, before school started, we again went in and again checked for carbon monoxide, and again, it showed zero. At that point, we thought we had discovered what the issue was, and I did decide to have school. As school started, we had a number of other students get sick. That started to escalate some, and at that point, soon as I found out, we went over, we again called 911, we again brought our paramedics over, we again brought the firefighters over, and at that point, we did a quick walk through the building, and the highest we got for a level of carbon monoxide was four. Okay, and I believe it's around sixty to eighty that kids typically, or people are affected more, but the highest was four, and it would fluctuate. It'd be zero, might jump to one, go down to zero, might jump to three, go down to zero. So there was nothing consistent in the building that was causing this to happen. At that point, we just didn't know what the issue was because this was taking place also on the very far side of the building by the middle school area, which is just the opposite of where the auditorium is. At that point, we decided we would evacuate the building, and that's what we did. We evacuated, we did a call to all the parents, set up a system in which case they could either take the bus home, parents could come pick them up, and we believe the evacuation went pretty well. We didn't have any issues with that whatsoever. But again, part of our problem is that we didn't know what to do. We did contact St. Cloud, which has a unit, can test a lot more things. That unit is in the building right now. When we evacuated, we not only evacuated the students for safety, but we also evacuated all the staff for safety. We had about twenty kids get sick today. Five of them were transported, but not all of them were transported because they need to be transported. They were transported because we couldn't get a hold of parents and we needed to transport them out of the building, so they were transported that way. But I believe about nine students went into the clinic, and the rest went into the hospital to have checked. As far as we know, everybody's stable, everybody's doing fine. No doctor has been able to give me a definitive answer on what's going on. Nobody has been able to tell me it is carbon monoxide. Nobody has been able to tell me it's not carbon monoxide. So we're at a loss on what is going on in that building right now. And the unit that we have in there right now, as soon as this meeting is over, I'll run back to the building to find out if they have found anything else. When I left, they still had not located any issues. And part of the problem is that if they don't locate any issues, then we still could have a problem there that they haven't been able to find, and we're, you know, that's almost worse than us finding what's going on, because then we still have an issue. We're gonna wait to determine what's going on with that unit that's in the building right now. If they detect anything or don't detect anything, at that point, I will send a message out to parents tonight to let them know what's going on tomorrow in regards to school. We did need to evacuate everybody, so we couldn't have the meeting of the board over there because nobody can be in there except the unit right now that is testing. All right? We're at a loss on what's going on. It's about the safety of the students. Mike, you have a question?
I was just at the hospital, and they said that all the carbon monoxide testing had to come back negative.
Yeah, that's, that's what I'm hearing, but...
And the flu testing had come back negative.
Yep.
So they were, they were at a loss too.
Yeah, so, and that's what I'm hearing from everybody, so we're not getting any clear indication exactly what's causing this. You know, it could be, I mean, we certainly have had a number of students sick over the last couple of weeks, you know, that it's that time of year. So it certainly could be that that's causing it, could certainly be something else that's causing it, but we don't know what's, what's really going on. Certainly, the unit that's in there right now will, is making, is able to do just tons more tests than our, our fire department has the equipment for. So at this point, we're waiting to find out what is going on in that building if they detect anything.
That's the St. Cloud Fire Department that's doing the testing?
It's not, it's a special unit, it's a hazardous unit of, of St. Cloud. And, and, you know, like I said, they're in there right now with a lot of equipment, checking a lot of things. They're going slow because in a lot of cases, they kind of know what they're looking for. In this case, they don't know what they're looking for. So they're taking their time, they're going through the building really slow to make sure that they do a thorough sweep of the building to find something that's causing the issue.
Do you have any idea when you might be able to make a decision about school tomorrow?
I'll make it early. You know, I'm hoping, you know, they're going slower than what they usually do because they just don't know what they're looking for, but all indications are they will give you something today on whether they find something or not. My strong feeling is, is that if they find nothing, I won't have school tomorrow. I still haven't thought about the elementary and what we'll do there. We haven't, haven't had a chance to discuss that yet, but if, if they don't find anything, then I, I would be reluctant to bring the students back in. When I thought it was a carbon monoxide thing, we weren't finding anything that we resolved, we brought the students back in, and you know, we had kids get sick, so my stance would be that we're gonna err on the safety of the kids.
Bob, are the symptoms all similar?
There's some nausea, they're all kind of similar, there are kind of symptoms that would say a little, you know, it's kind of carbon monoxide type of symptoms, but both for the person, the people who have gone into the Gainesville hospital and even the one that was at the Minneapolis, they were not, nobody was willing to say this is carbon monoxide poisoning. You know, at the most, the one that went Minneapolis, they had a little bit of elevated level in their blood, but that was it. It kind of came down to if it was a smoker, it'd be kind of that level of carbon monoxide, but that was it. And they would not say that's what the problem was. So we're at a loss here. We just don't know, and I wish I had an answer, because I can fix something, I know what's going on. It's hard to fix something when you don't know what is happening right now. So that's kind of where we're at. I will let parents know as quick as I can. I know that they're concerned about it, we're trying to find out what's going on. We're gonna, we're gonna be concerned about the safety of their kids, and we'll err on the side of safety for the students and staff at this time. So. Any other kind of questions on that?
So Bob, if it isn't anything, what would be the next step?
Well, I think then, you know, we probably need to have, have a, you know, the only thing I can think of is that, you know, ventilation, that could be an issue, food could be an issue. You know, I think we've got to start looking at those other types of things that could possibly cause something. I'm assuming if it's ventilation, they'll pick up whatever's there. I mean, I would assume that's accurate. You know, I don't think it's stagnant stuff, I'm not hearing that type of stuff. And again, we have had a large number of kids with flu, so it could be a combination of a number of things, I don't know. I would just be very reluctant, even if they don't find something, to say, well, we're good to go, but we don't know what happened.
Does the department have staff to come in or anything? Do you have to contact the Department of Health?
I think, you know, we've had the, I think the state fire marshal was there when I went, I think even the Department of Defense was there when I left, a branch of them. So I think people are coming in to check to see what's going on. I want to hear what that, you know, what St. Cloud piece has to say, and then we'll make a decision on who else we have to bring in.
Mark, Dennis Miley at PHCS said that they were in contact with the Department of Health and with the hazardous something at HCMC.
Yeah, typically, when that, that group comes in, they do contact the Department of Health. Yeah, dude.
Was there a lockdown, and why the dogs?
Um, no dogs today.
No dogs?
No, not dogs. We did hold the kids in the classroom until we did a quick walkthrough with the meters, and then we started putting evacuation in place to get the buses there, get them out as quick as we could at that point. But there were no dogs there today.
Were there any last night?
No. Yep.
Was there a picture somewhere of dogs that must have been shooting in the school?
Yeah, I, no, not to my knowledge at all. Yeah, I don't have, wouldn't have an answer for that one, I mean...
No, I saw a picture of dogs, so it must have been shots.
Yeah, you know, unless, unless one of the officers had a dog with them, you know, in the car, I'm not aware of that, but again, I was busy running through the building with detectors at that time, so if somebody brought a dog in and had it in their car and they brought it out, I don't know, but there was no dog as far as I know in the building itself.
These were not ODs, they had friendship dogs.
No, 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 it wasn't dogs. Petting dogs?
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't, I'm not aware of it. Certainly, I mean, there are dogs also that can smell, you know, gases, but as far as I know, we did not use them at all.
So they didn't know if they could.
Yeah.
I knew the other reason for dogs.
Yeah, if they brought them in, I'm not aware of it, and I was through that whole building last night, and today I've been there the whole time and have not seen one. Any other questions either by the board or anybody else?
I would just say, I think I could help with that a little bit. I've got the proposal of evaluation, sort of, so...
Okay. Well, right now, I've got to hear what that...
No, no, that's, that's fine. I just, I think I can give you a little bit, because you, you know, you're kind of looking at everything, really focusing so that you can arrive at a differential diagnosis, so you know how to, what is further evaluation.
Yeah. So, you know, and I, right now, I just need to hear what they have to say, and then we go from there.
Okay. Is there anything else from the Board of the Public? All right. We have not adopted the agenda yet, so. Motion by Deb, second by Rep. Any further discussion? Hearing not all was in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All same sign. Motion carries. Item five, approve or correct amendments from the December fourth regular board meeting. Motion by Deb, approve. Second by Lou. Any further discussion? Hearing not all was in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All same sign. Motion carries. And after reports, we've got November treasures report and monthly balance sheet. Motion by Dave. Second by Lou. Any further discussion? Hearing not all was in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All same sign. Motion carries. Item seven, audit, approve the bills. We've got the additional November bills and December bills.
I had the opportunity to just go over, go through the bills, and I didn't see anything other than norm. The only thing that I would make a comment on is I would like to sit down with Bob and maybe Joan, just to kind of go over some of the more details of, some things that are not on there that I would like to see on there, so that there's more clarification to what I'm going through, it makes my job a little bit easier. So I would, I recommend the approval of those two, November and December bills, but I would also like to mention that I would like to sit down with them and just go over some of my thoughts on some of the bills that I did see.
Okay, you guys can arrange time to do that. So we have a motion by Mark to approve the bills. Second by Bob. Any further discussion? Hearing not all was in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All same sign. Motion carries. No items on the consent agenda, as we discussed, items number one, two. Number one and two on the business. I don't know if we'll reschedule this, or what will we do?
Well, I think we can talk about that as we set up our January meeting. I think that that particular meeting can set up, because after that, we can really bring them in whenever we want. It's just a little more complicated. I think if we're going to do it, I think we should set it up at our first January meeting where we schedule all our meetings anyway. So that'd be a good time to reschedule if we want, we can put right on the, our schedule for the year and reschedule it.
Okay. Then we'll get that, I don't know, before here down the road. But first, we will look at number three, review and consider approval to rescind the resolution relating to the eight anticipation certificates approved at the November thirteenth school board meeting.
Yeah, really, what we are going to do is borrow money to keep our cash flow, and I would have never guessed that the state was going to come through and go up to pay us back at eighty-two percent, but that's what they did. Once they did that, it took care of our cash flow issue. In fact, we can't even borrow the money, even if we wanted to borrow the money. We don't have the legal right to do that anymore. The unfortunate piece is that this all came out right after we had kind of signed everything. Most of the groups that had worked on it were very good, in fact, even Ellers was pretty good. The only charge that we'll probably incur is a fifteen hundred dollar charge. Originally, it would have cost us three thousand with dollars. They said they would cut that in half because they did do quite a bit of work to get set up for that. And they said, yep, we do come to the point where something else happens, because the state of Minnesota could change this again if they find out that their budget is not what it, they think it could be. They could change it back and we could end up with a cash flow problem and have to borrow again. They did say that they would take that fifteen hundred dollars then and put it towards, and if we had to borrow again, so that we didn't, wouldn't waste it. But they did feel like they needed to get that much out of it, but it is half of what they would normally charge. So that would, I believe right now, that will be the only cost that we will incur for the business that we did, which I do think is reasonable. I don't think we could ask them. There were a number of places, people, or a couple of groups that said, no, that's all right, we understand, and that's it, but they haven't done as much work as Ellers had done.
Okay. Motion, Bob, second by Mark. I don't know if we need a roll call to do a resolution or...
It's not a resolution, we can certainly not do a roll call.
Yeah.
Was there a roll call to initiate it to begin with?
Yeah.
You might as well do a roll call.
All right. Bob?
Aye.
Dave Turner?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Deb?
Aye.
Dave Johnson?
Aye.
Gretchen?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Okay. Bob, I've referred to the fact that we need to set a board meeting date for January and other issues, so that is our next item.
I, yeah, I put a recommendation in there, the fifteenth is kind of in the middle, but I think it's before the leadership trainings and that type of stuff. We'll have a number of things that we have to do at the first meeting, from setting committees to setting our dates and times for our meetings. I will be sending out an email to the board members just with some suggestions. One of the things that I will suggest is that we maybe look at having one more meeting and one more session a month. But I'll, all of these, I'll send that information to you just for something to think about. It'd be what we would talk about at the meeting. Nothing needs to be talked about before that, but it will be a couple of things as far as this would enable us to do this, this, and this. You guys can think about it, and then at the board meeting, we can discuss it and then decide what we're, what we're gonna do. There's some benefit to it. It possibly could make our board meeting itself go a little bit longer, but at the same time, if we have one exception session in the same month, it also, this gives us an opportunity to do a lot more discussion, working on policies and other things that might be beneficial for us to do. So again, I'm not, I'm just kind of, the email that I sent will just give you some think about this things. Like again, it'll be discussed at the board meeting, we won't discuss it at all before that, but it'll be think about it, and then let's talk about pros and cons of a few items, and then go from there. So, but the fifteenth, I just kind of picked, it was kind of stayed that core, was what we did this year.
And we would also need to tell...
Yep, and I guess I would ask, and I, you know, the board, if they'd be willing to possibly look at it earlier time, but I, you know, I think that's something that we can discuss right now, that I don't know what feeling that the board is. And from my point of view, I am being, you know, selfish to some degree, you know, if we move the board meeting up a little bit, it shortens my date just a little bit. But again, that's up to the board if they're willing to do that or not. Either way, I will be there. Well, that's, you guys, I think it depends on when you guys can make it, you know, I think, and I don't want, I truly don't want to put a hinder on any board member. I'd rather have the board members there than not having board members there, so, you know, and we could certainly set the first one at eight o'clock if you guys want to think about that, and then we can make the decision for the rest of the year.
We won't have any...
Pardon me?
We're gonna have to anyway, because we're gonna be board members.
Yes.
So it would just be the January one, that rule?
Yes. So that's the only one that I'm asking for right now. And I'm fine either way. So if you, if the board would rather keep it at eight for this one and then make that final decision, it'll give you something to think about in the meantime, and then we can decide.
You could also get some input from the board.
Yep. Yeah, I think we just set this one. So do we want to just keep it at eight, make it simple for this, the first one in January, and then we can decide after that?
I'm okay with seven, Deb, you?
No.
You okay with it?
Seven?
Seven's fine.
But we set that, and then we'll go from there?
Yep.
And take what's been put from the board members.
Yep, that sounds great. Okay, so the fifteenth, that's a Tuesday, at seven o'clock then. And it will blow back, hopefully, we'll go back to the seminar room. All right? So...
Do you want, would you like to move that discussion about bringing the kids back to that day? Should we talk about that that day, or do you want to talk about that?
No, if you want to discuss that now and look at that, that's fine with me. I think it's, I think it's whenever you want to bring them in. I think as long as we let them know, they would have enough time to be able to put it together. But we would have to go, if we're gonna do it on fifteenth, we need to move that meeting probably to two o'clock, otherwise you would not get the kids there.
I think that's gonna be too much stuff to go through.
Well, you had to, you do have a lot of stuff to go through with the new board members coming onboard.
Right.
Maybe we could discuss with Lori and her team, see if there's another type of work to do.
Why don't we give, why don't we come back, I'll talk to Lori, and I'll at least send you guys an email with a couple of suggestions on when they could come in. And then on the January meeting, we can make a final decision and add that right to what we're doing.
Okay. So we need, we...
Will we make a motion to remove the January meeting to January fifteenth, seventh, eighth?
Okay, motion by Mark, second by Lou. Any further discussion? Hearing not all was in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All same sign. Motion carries. Number five, review and consider approval of resolution directing administration to look at budget adjustments for the 2013-14 school year.
Really, this is a typical piece. It's just saying that it's time to plan the thirteen-14 budget, and what you're saying is that it's okay for me to start moving forward and start putting the pieces together that we need to budget for that year. At the same time, the board should be aware that I'm also starting to look at this year and where we are and where we think we should be. And as soon as I get that data put together, I'll come back to the board, report to you that this is where we're at based on the budget that we had planned for this year. We're either where we should be, we're either behind or ahead of what we should, what we thought we'd be. So I'll bring that to the board, I'm just waiting for some more things to get put together.
I'll make a motion to, to, to the director of administrators to keep track of the budget adjustment for 2013-14 school year.
Okay. Motion by Mark, and second by Rep. Any further discussion? And we need a roll call.
Bob?
Aye.
Dave Turner?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Deb?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
Gretchen?
Aye.
Lou?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, number six, review or respond to public comment from December fourth board meeting. Daryl addressed the board on the JCI issues and the confession of judgment specifically. And as we've stated many times, Daryl, the board settled with JCI in order to avoid litigation on a contract which was signed on behalf of the district. Litigation attorney fees could potentially have cost the district in excess of a hundred thousand dollars, plus there was a significant risk that a judgment during a million dollars could have been entered against the school district in favor of JCI had the matter been litigated. Our legal position was not strong, and there was a signed contract. Upon the advice of our attorneys and considering our legal position, the cost of litigation and the potential of being burdened by a million dollar judgment, the board made the decision to settle for two hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars. While nobody was happy about this, we felt that the risks associated with not settling were too great. You had commented believing that the two hundred and ninety-five thousand was not justly due. I think you're confusing whether it's justly due for the work done or whether it's justly due in the context of a lawsuit settlement. We agreed, we agreed to pay two hundred and ninety-five thousand to settle the lawsuit. We never stated nor agreed that two hundred and ninety-five thousand was for actual work done. So that two hundred and ninety-five thousand was justly due to settle the lawsuit. Now, you followed up with some written questions to Mr. Hewitt that pertain to discussions held in closed session, and we're not going to disclose the nature of those discussions. The settlement agreement that you have was a result of those discussions, and you have a copy of that. There's a reason that the state of Minnesota allows closed sessions for litigation because there's some sensitive things, and we're not going to repeat those here. And we would like to move on. We'd like to not address JCI anymore. I think the rest of the board has moved on, and we wish that you would, and the rest of the public as well.
Can I comment on that?
Number seven, review and consider approval of resolution of school boards supporting team-up grant application to Minnesota High School League Foundation.
Um, I think it's, we, this is something that we did last year too, it just really gives us the ability to get some dollars. It's a good deal.
Okay, one from Bob, and second by Deb. Any further discussion?
Bob, can I ask a question? Do we get any money for our team-up program through that?
I believe we did last year. Yep, I'd have to double check exactly, Mike. I, certainly I can give you those facts later, but I thought we got some last year, or I should say, I believe for this year through that. And I think, we believe, we think we have a good shot to get some more for this year.
Thank you.
Perfect. Excellent.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all was in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All same sign. Motion carries. Oh, yep, let's call the roller now.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay. We've got no items on the personnel. Move on to information reports. Matt, your question?
Um, yeah, just a couple of updates. Um, we had our first annual community carolene parade, uh, event this last weekend, our last Friday, and that was good turnout. Uh, we have some good suggestions for how we can even make that better in the future. So, uh, continue to try to help, uh, get people downtown and build that community. Uh, our next big event that we're planning is our Winter Fest on Lake Coronas, February sixteenth. So we're actively meeting on that. Our community ed winter program brochure, as you all received, is in full swing now. Lot of new programs, uh, happening there. Uh, we're hoping to have our number, our seventh episode of B and C TV out this week. Um, maybe a little bit affected with, uh, how it all shakes out for this week with school and everything, so. And we're in planning mode for spring program, so any ideas, feedback, comments, um, we're open to that, so. Any questions? Okay, thank you.
Uh, Deb, just request that.
I was not able to make the, it met last Thursday. I was not able to make that.
Yeah, I was there at the meeting. Uh, we really didn't have a, a lot of additional things that we need to board on and all. It really was about procedures. We had a lot of discussion about where the paperwork needs to go first in order to get the signatures and then bring it forward for approval and that type of stuff. So that was the main, uh, focus of that particular meeting. So, uh, I think we need to do just to make sure that we get our paperwork, so that the paper's going where it should go first and then get to the, the committee so that we can vote on it. So that was kind of the discussion.
Some of that stuff has to be gone over every once in a while.
Okay. All right, so Bob, Ed, and the board.
Um, I think the only piece that I really put on there is really with, um, the horrible tragedy that took place in Connecticut. Um, I think it's time that we again look at just our safety precautions. I've met with, um, our administrative team to discuss it. You know, I, I don't have a good answer for this. Um, even in Connecticut, they had a number of procedures in place that we do not have in place in this district yet. The, the incidents still took place. And, um, there were unfortunate deaths, old, um, children and adults. And so I don't know if there's a perfect solution to it. Um, even places that have had armed guards have had situations that have taken, taken place. But I think that anytime something like this happens, it reminds us that we need to do our best, keep the safety of the students in mind, and we need to have the discussion. Are there changes that we should make in order to help provide better security? So I think that's coming in your way. Um, I think either in a work session or during the regular board meeting, we'll have some discussion about it. Um, the, my administrative team will certainly bring up some suggestions. I think in the meantime, we are going to make sure that as many doors that can be locked are locked. Here at the elementary, it's a little bit easier. We don't have as many places that, uh, people are going in and out. At the high school, it's a little more complicated because we have, um, students that have class outside of the building that have to leave and go to the other, other buildings. Um, we have students that leave the building to drive here and enter. Um, we have community ed, which has doors. Um, so it, it becomes a bigger issue over there just because of the needs of the students in order to do things. So, but we have to have that discussion, and we need to make some decisions on where we do it. The unfortunate piece is that when you put more of those pieces in place, it also tightens things up and it's harder for people to get into the buildings and, and use them like the community is used to doing. But I, we need to have that discussion and decide whether we're going to change anything at all. And probably review what we tend to do and what's working well and what we might want to change in order to make it a safer place. So just be aware of the timing. And certainly keep going on. Those people are thoughts and prayers.
Thanks, Bob. Um, and before we adjourn, I'd like to publicly thank Dave and Bob and Gretchen for, for your service and support. Um, Dave and Bob, we've been here for four years each, right? Gretchen, for any more than that, anybody?
Good to see you.
So, let's give my hand. No. Yes.
Usually Mrs. Gretchen's part of the, because she's behind the, what do you call it? Recognition.
About this, I, uh, my comment about your, um, your comment regarding the school safety and stuff like that. Is that something that you can bring back to like a work session for all of us?
I, I think I'll bring it back to a work session. Um, I think the administrative team has started to talk about things. There are really are, to a certain degree, limited things that we can do. Um, I think, um, the check-in system where they have to buzz in, that, you know, that's something we can talk about. You know, if the community is willing to pay for police officers to be in each building. You know, those are things, it's, that's a high cost thing, but I think everything should be at least discussed. Look at pros and cons and go from there.
I would, I would also like, I mean, because it does affect a lot of the kids and, and it does affect the kids, I should say, a lot of them. It, but I would, I would like to see also some of the parents from those kids to be participants because if they don't know some of the constraints and we would just come up with something, there, it's, it's not going to be, I don't think it's going to be well received. I think we need to buy the whole community, especially somebody from every grade level maybe, a representative or somebody. Just so that it's not just us saying, well, we can't do this.
Well, certainly, there's a couple of ways you can do that. One is a community input type of, of meeting. Um, we can have a, you know, reconvene, the safety committee to have that discussion to get representation. So there's a number of.
That's just my, I mean, I don't know about the other board members, that was just something I think that I think would be well received that some of the parents.
And I, I can't debate that, because if you're going to make changes, it would be nice to hear from the community and hear from the parents.
I disagree. I think anything that you do, or we do, or you do, that the public is so sick of this stuff that they would jump through the extra hoops. Unfortunately, there's no answer. The people we fought in Vietnam or the NBA in Vietcong, and most of the time when you put fireworks on them, they leave. Once in a while we get folks to, we give a life, give their life to hurt you. And when that becomes, when that happens, you're going to get hurt. And this guy shot his way in, and I think he made the decision when he killed his mother that he was going to die in that school. It wasn't going to end good, so.
Uh, and there are, there are no perfect answers to this piece.
I don't, I don't think the public is going to mind at all anything that you come up with to make it more difficult and hurt.
No, I don't, I agree that too.
Mark, what I, what I would say on that is we did approve a crisis manual. Then we updated our crisis plan last April. We work with our health and safety committee. Typically on plans such as that, they're not made public. Um, people on that team are within the, within the, the organization. I think as soon as you have outside people on those that can compromise some of the security of the items that we have on that crisis plan, that's why we don't post it on our website, things like that. So I think a lot of the information that's in our crisis plan is, is given to us through the health and safety person that we work with who's the expert. And I think as we tweak, that needs to be something that's, that needs to be something that's done with, within the organization so that, so that it's not out there anywhere.
I just see the, you know, the news where the parents are, you know, still, I mean, it is, it's, it's a tragedy because it's kids.
Yep.
And everybody is trying to, everybody's trying to figure out what, how we can make our kids safer. And I think if you take that away from them, sometimes, but sometimes you can. They, they, and they, they do emphasize that. They do talk about it. Parents do talk about it. When they get, lose all control, I mean, that's, I mean, you've seen some other interviews with some of the parents, it was just, oh, it hurt.
I agree with you, Mark, that you need to maybe have public input, but the plan in and of itself is a classified document.
Oh, that I'm not arguing. I'm just saying there's things that I think.
Wait, for input. You have a question or not?
Yeah, yeah.
But yeah.
I'm not saying that if we decide to dig a tunnel, that's where we're going to hang off the kids, but anyhow.
Sorry, a little bird watch, Deb.
That's okay. Like I said, I'm not used to doing this part. Gretchen, you do this. I've been for many years now that voice of appreciation for the rest of us who, uh, will allow us to. We gave her the duty, but I'm going to start over here. Mr. Logan. School board members are the dedicated few who represent our community values and thinking about public education in our community. The bottom line for these individuals is keeping alive the dream of public education for every child and making sure students achieve and succeed. We would like to thank you for your commitment to high standards of achievement, supportive district employees, and responsible leadership for the school district. With that, thanks from Mr. G. Yeah?
Thank you.
Nothing really on.
Oh, come on, isn't this something you want to?
Gretchen, I am going to go on a little bit about though, because a lot of people don't realize the work that gets done behind the scenes sometimes in the school board. I mean, at any company or business, with the number of employees that this district has, somebody has to, or somebody does, the get well cards, the condolence cards, the congratulation cards, the do you, do you need to pick me up sometimes, it's just a pat on the back. And Gretchen has been responsible for doing that for all of us for a long time. I personally am going to miss her because, well, we have our own. How does that go over your mind? We're two sides to the same, she's the good one, I'm the bad guy there.
Good job, man.
There you go. She keeps me from going up and I keep her from falling down sometimes, and I'm going to miss that on the board. Thank you.
Thanks for presenting, Deb. If there's nothing else, maybe it's adjourned.
Well, I'd like to say one thing. Um, I think we owe Bob a some appreciation for all the work he's done giving us that building. He's a lot of our soul, and I do appreciate that part.